I'd like to welcome everybody to the beautiful Mount Sunapee. And Commissioner and members of the Mount Sunapee Advisory Committee, my special welcome to you and to our elected officials tonight. While we wait on the bulb, the warm-up, I do appreciate the Commissioner relating to beloved Fenway Park because we do recognize that the post and beam structure here does not lend to exactly the best viewing. And what I'm going to try to do is find a way that I can not block the screen so you can hear more about this master development plan. So I hope I'll be able to find a place that is better rather than worse. I think we're all here tonight because many of us share a deep love for Mount Sunapee. There's a deep heritage of Mount Sunapee. For as long as I've been into ski business and Tim and Diane, we continually hear people tell us, "I learned to ski at Mount Sunapee." And that's because of how long Mount Sunapee's heritage has been. So tonight I'll talk to you about previously approved. A couple of the plans or projects that were approved before are chairlift upgrades, base lodge upgrades, adding snowmaking to ski trails, without going through a 5,100-foot high-speed express quad chairlift, something for novice skiers, probably a moving carpet, four top-to-bottom ski trails, plus some interconnector trails comprising around 75, 80 acres maybe, a new base lodge at the base of the West Bowl, a new parking lot, and the necessary infrastructure to support it. So to put it in context, these are the existing ski trails at Mount Sunapee. This is the western flank that we call the West Bowl, and this red line would be the alignment for the proposed West Bowl Express Quad Chairlift. Looking at it in plan view on a map, again, these are existing ski trails at Mount Sunapee, and this would be the West Bowl trails laid in. There are two projects that are new in this master plan that you've not seen before, and one of them would be to upgrade the Sunapee Expresso Elevated so it allows for a much simpler build, much less impact in building it into very different sites. Associated with this project, there are long-term revenue streams to the New Hampshire General Fund such as rooms and meals taxes, business enterprise taxes, business profit taxes, long-term revenue streams to DREAD with our lease payment for which they also, they have two payments, a base payment and a 3% revenue sharing payment. So any increased revenues from operations at Mount Sunapee are directly shared with DREAD to benefit Cannon Mountain. And then additional full-time jobs, not only at Mount Sunapee, full-time year-round jobs and seasonal jobs, that we think will also be part of the economic stimulus in this area to provide more jobs. So this sums up our master plan. Again, we believe this master plan is consistent with the heritage and history of Mount Sunapee as it has evolved and as it has been enhanced over the last 60 years of operation as an important ski area in the state of New Hampshire. And I would point out, Mount Sunapee is number two in the state of New Hampshire in skier visits behind Loom Mountain, but many areas have proposals to increase their market share. And we want to remain a viable and competitive business as we give our guests the best possible experience, be good stewards of Mount Sunapee, promote tourism in the state of New Hampshire, and specifically the Lake Sunapee region, and be an important economic stimulus. So thank you very much for your time tonight. And as Nate and Jeff said, I'll take questions for 10 minutes, and then I think they'll cut it off and we'll move directly into the public comment period. I think I could sit down, they're gonna let me off easy. Yes?
Where is the parking lot?
The new parking lot would be at the base of the Sun Bowl, and in fact, if we'd like, we could take a microphone to anybody, or the West Bowl, it would be at the base of the West Bowl in Goshen.
And how would you ask?
On Brook Road. Yes?
Do you think your tax is to Newbury and Goshen to 1%?
Right now, our taxes are, on average, about $125,000 a year, with about $100,000 going to Newbury and $25,000 going to Goshen. Yes?
Will the new setup, is this a double of the capacity of stability to the next lifting on Mount Sunapee?
No, it would not be a doubling, with all acreage in the master plan in the current area of lifts and trails that we've not built, plus that, it would be 20 to 22% increasing capacity, which is still a good-sized capacity increase. Yes? Thank you. Is everybody here to question?
No.
Okay, okay. The question was, how many jobs were created with the Mount Sunapee Adventure Park that were full-time and how many were seasonal, and how many would be created with the West Bowl? We added two full-time year-round jobs with the summer adventure park and about 65 seasonal jobs. We think four to five full-time year-round jobs with the West Bowl project and 25 to 35 seasonal jobs. Yes? We could take a microphone for you?
Yeah, thanks. I've just got a couple of questions about the map. I'm looking at the key, and one yellow box says potential real estate, and another yellow box says proposed glades. And then I'm looking at, I mean, what does this big yellow area there, oh, sorry, what does the big yellow area represent? Does it represent proposed glades, or does it represent potential real estate? Or, and I noticed in the presentation, you didn't mention the 175 to 250 units of real estate. Could you just kind of explain that today?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. In our master plan in 2004, we were asked by the state of New Hampshire to list any and all possible uses of the land in the West Bowl. And one of those, one of those potential uses could be real estate development. So we were transparent in 2004 that that is a potential. But in the plan, we also stated that there were no detailed plans for real estate development at that time. That remains true today, 10 years later. We still have done no detailed plans for any real estate development, but it was to show that that is a potential use for the land, that remains just that, a potential. Yes?
Do you foresee any problems with the snowmaking in the West Bowl? Do you require more snow there? And the water will come up from Lake Sunapee, but will it also drain back to Lake Sunapee, or will it go toward the other watershed, the Sugar River in Connecticut?
It stays in the same watershed, which is the Sugar River watershed. It all merges in Newport, whether it comes from the Goshen side to Newport with the Sugar River branch, or from the Sunapee side. But the water stays in the same watershed, and we have ample snowmaking capacity to be able to make snow in the West Bowl.
Hi, Dave. Thanks for your description of the history behind the mountain. I think that's really helpful for people. But I think it would be also very important for them to know a little bit more about the details of the lease ownership and so forth, and how that's been transferred. I don't know the specifics, so if you could help the audience with the understanding of that, as well as if you own any other real estate parcels that boundary the lease and how that all works together. I know, it's complicated.
You want me to take that, or you want to take it? I think I understand the question. Tom Lithgow of CNL is in the room, and CNL is a real estate investment trust as defined by the SEC regulations. And they have 18 or 19 ski areas nationwide that they own the underlying assets, like the snow guns. We operate the business, and they stay at arm's length to the operator. So Tim and Diane are the owners of the business that operates Mount Sunapee.
And with regard to the other, are there any other real estate holdings in that area?
No, they are not owners of any other properties. Yes?
Has there been any kind of impacts done on wildlife in that new proposed expansion?
Yes. In 2004, and those are actually included in the appendices of the master development plan, we did a rare endangered species study, as well as a critical wildlife habitat study in the West Bowl area, and an old growth forest study. And those, we did not find any environmental issues on either of those three things that would be a problem for the West Bowl.
Hi, this is the Mullers.
You have a question right here? Oh, I'm sorry. I saw two people at the same time.
Oh, okay. Are the Mullers private investors in the Goshen property?
Pardon?
Are the Mullers private investors in the Goshen property?
They are the only owners in the Goshen property.
Thank you.
How many acres of forest would have to be cleared to create the services and trails of the West Bowl? I'm assuming that most of it is completely forested at this time. So how many acres would you need to use and cut the forest?
We said there would be 75 to maybe 80 acres of ski trails. 50% of that or more would be on lands that have already been logged. They were owned by companies that were doing logging. So there are a total of 656 acres, and out of that, I'm going to guess 125 of that might be cleared for ski trails, parking lot, base area.
This is for the West Bowl only? I'm not interested in the rest of the area. What would the new West Bowl use up?
And that's what I'm referring to. In the West Bowl, with the top-to-bottom ski trails, probably 75 acres, and then in the base area for the parking lot, the base lodge, and so forth, there would be something else. So out of a total of 656 acres, I'm estimating 100, yeah, less than 100 maybe, but about that.
Thank you.
Right here, Michelle.
Theoretically, at the end of the lease, what's going to happen when you have public land and private land as part of the ski trail system? Is there any provisions or thoughts as to how that will be transferred to a new leaseholder or back to the state to operate or whatever? I think that's an important thing to keep in consideration.
That's a very good question. There are a couple bases for it. Number one, I hope of our partnership with the state, somewhere about 10 to 15 years prior to then, we're renewing that lease, plus the continuous operators at Mount Sunapee beyond that date. But secondly, whether it be in the state of New Hampshire or across the ski industry in America, it's very common that there's private land and public land that make up the total operating lands of the business. And it's been successfully transferred many times. A lot of ski areas could be on United States Forest Service land, or Vermont State Forest Service land with a combination of land ownerships. So there's a lot of precedence before us of how those transfers happen seamlessly.
Hi, I'm sorry, I got a little late. Got here late, so you may have covered this. I was looking at the plan that you nicely filed with the town, and I'm looking at the boundaries for the leasehold that are in Exhibit 1.2 in what the Town Hall has. And the boundaries for the leasehold on this drawing seem to be different. Does this drawing have the 175 acres that you want to add to the leasehold included in the boundary? Is that why this one looks bigger than this one?
Those are the current boundaries now, and Commissioner Rose covered that earlier. You want me to cover it?
Yeah.
The New Hampshire Superior Court rendered their decision in July that those were the intended boundaries of Mount Sunapee's ski lease area, and so the contract will be reformed to depict those boundaries as shown on the map beside you. Okay, have time for one more? In the West Bowl, there is none. There's none in the West Bowl? No. Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to turn it back over now to Commissioner Rose and Nate Miller.
Great. Thank you very much, Jay. Jay, thank you for that presentation and outline of the MDP. And now we'd like to start the formal public comment portion of this hearing. So what I'd like to do, again, just to reiterate, hopefully everybody's had a chance that would like to speak, has signed up on the blue sheet. I will read the name of the individual as well as the person who was on deck so they can get prepared and come down to the mic. When it is your turn to speak, we're going to ask you again to be, keep it to two minutes. Nate will be the timekeeper. Yellow's at...
1998, Commissioner of DREAD, Rob Thompson, came to my store and said to me, "If you're not in favor of leasing, you might want to put a for sale sign on your door right now because we're going to be closing Sunapee in two years." The state of New Hampshire was no longer going to fund the operations of Mount Sunapee. I just imagine what the impact would have been on every business in this area. Instead, for the past 16 years, Tim and Diane Muller have reversed the financial losses, turned Mount Sunapee into a moneymaker for the state. Reinvesting in Mount Sunapee now would mean more revenue for all the businesses like mine that thrive, that thrive on many of thousands of visitors who come here to this area to enjoy all that our beautiful region has to offer. Tim and Diane Muller have always done the responsible thing. They have improved the infrastructure of this facility, been environmentally conscientious, and improved the economy of the local businesses. When responsible owners do responsible improvements and expansions, it is good for everyone. We have an opportunity to make a real important, real improvement to the single important tourism attraction in the Sunapee region. I urge our state leaders to approve this plan. Thank you.
Colin Nelson, you're up, and Everett Pollard, you're on deck.
How you doing today? My name is Colin Nelson, lifetime resident here in Newbury, New Hampshire. Live pretty much one mile nautically across the other side of the Big Pond. I'm very partial to the Mullers. I very much enjoy them being here. I've had an opportunity to work in a family-run business for quite a few years, 1968, '69. Sorry, I got somebody rude here. My father worked here as ski patrol. My mother worked here during those same years as ski, sorry, kitchen staff. I was basically growing up here, as this place is my daycare center. Dropped off at 6:30 in the morning, picked up about 6:30 at night. Then I grew hair, I became an adult, and I finally got to the point in time where I started working here. Started as a lift rat when it was a state-run mountain. Wanted grooming, loved grooming, loved machinery, could not get the state to basically give me that chance because unfortunately, the state list is ungodly long until you die. I had an opportunity to bail out of here, went to Pat's Peak Ski Area, worked there for three years, jumped out of Pat's Peak, running machinery, and I came back to Sunapee as a state-run mountain, as a groomer. Worked for the state for those three years until the Mullers ended up taking over. The state's equipment, no offense, gentlemen, was run into the ground. Their lifts, their equipment, everything. I had a chance to do 65 miles an hour off of Hans and Chase ledges because of the thrust bearing. Real bad, and I'm tickled pink because with these people taking over, we immediately got machines that could climb, machines that could hold on the mountain, do everything we're looking for to make a nice safe resort. And again, if we had something where we had a safety issue, we could say, "This is bad," and they went for it. Love these people to death, and I am 100% in support of them doing it again. My son and daughter also work here now, so it's the fourth generation that's going on. Thank you.
Everett Pollard, you're up, with Eric Wheeler on deck.
Commissioner Rose, committee members, my name's Everett Pollard, I'm from Sunapee. My comments come from several different perspectives. First, I have lived here all my life. Throughout my life, I was able to take advantage of the recreational opportunities that the state park here offered me, including swimming, hiking, snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, and camping, and a few others I won't even admit to. I really, I want you to know that I really care about this park. Secondly, I've skied at Mount Sunapee for over 50 years. During that time, I've witnessed several major expansions of the ski area operations that the state undertook. Those expansions were welcomed, and they were greatly improved, they actually greatly improved the skiing experience here. In 1998, Tim and Diane Muller, and along with General Manager Jay Gamble and their wonderful staff, took over the operations here at Mount Sunapee. They've invested many millions of dollars, they've made incredible improvements to this ski area. They have really done a great job. Now they have proposed the West Bowl expansion, and it too could greatly improve and enhance the skiing experience here. Obviously, I'm in favor of it. Third, I'm also a businessman, a local businessman here. My wife and I run North Cape Design. We're a small residential design-build company in Sunapee. Our clients are the type of folks that can live and work almost anywhere. And when I take them on as clients, I always ask them, "Why did you pick this area?" The overwhelming reaction is, because of Mount Sunapee, the skiing experience here is fantastic, and there are great opportunities for their children and grandchildren in the ski programs. So it's a wonderful thing. I regard Mount Sunapee as the economic engine of this area. Without a vibrant and thriving Mount Sunapee resort, our local economy would suffer. I'm totally enthusiastic about this West Bowl expansion. Thank you.
Eric Wheeler is up, with Hes Gates on deck.
Good evening. My name is Eric Wheeler, and I am Vice President of the Board of Directors of New England Handicap Sports Association. We're actually been longtime guests here of Mount Sunapee. In fact, since 1974, we've been guests of the mountains here. Recently voted the best adaptive ski program in the country, 2013-2014 season. None of that is possible without the commitment that the Mullers, Millers, and Sunapee staff actually make to our organization. Because of that commitment, we're of course in support of the expansion. An expanded ski area makes for a better experience for all of our ski participants, whether they be the adaptive participants here at the mountain, or the normal, the regular stand-up skiers, as we like to call them. So again, we've been guests here since 1974. That's a huge commitment to this community, a commitment that has been continued for the past 16 years. So again, we wanted to express our complete support of the expansion of the mountain. Thank you.
Hes Gates is up, with Keith Perkins on deck.
Good evening. My name is Hes Gates, and I live in Sunapee. I'd like to share comments from two perspectives of Mount Sunapee. First, as a small local business owner, and second, a longtime New Hampshire resident. As lifelong skiers and hikers, my wife and I have enjoyed Mount Sunapee for over 50 years. In 2007, we became local, small business owners. We own and operate a bed and breakfast in Sunapee Harbor. The mountain is a tremendous lodging partner. They are our number-one source of winter bookings. And with the opening of the Adventure Park, it's quickly becoming a significant source of summer business. Our B&amp;B guests love the family-friendliness of Mount Sunapee. The Mullers provide a competitive, high-quality recreational guest experience. This in turn provides us with numerous return guests. However, we also hear from our guests about expansion in other New Hampshire areas such as Ragged, Pat's Peak, Loom, and even Cannon. This plan before us will keep Sunapee competitive in both winter and summer, and avoid being leapfrogged. Any decline in Mount Sunapee visitors will ripple through local businesses. We all need Mount Sunapee to implement their plan and to continue to be competitive. The Mullers have been excellent stewards of Mount Sunapee. They also have been responsible citizens. I urge DREAD to approve this master development plan and not lose this important recreational resource and local economic engine. Thank you.
Next up is Keith Perkins, with Doug Graham on deck.
My name is Keith Perkins. I've been connected with the Lake Sunapee area since 1995 when I enrolled at Colby-Sarre College. I had the pleasure of meeting Tim and Diane for the first time in 1997 when, as a representative of the college to the Lake Sunapee Chamber of Commerce, they came and presented their development plan for Mount Sunapee. One thing I noted, though I went to every meeting that year, they were the only developers that made any effort to come and make a presentation to the local chapter, and it spoke to their commitment to this local community. Now today, I'm a resident of Goshen. I moved back to the area in 2006, actually a butt land that the Mullers own. Though I did not learn to ski at Mount Sunapee, my daughter Abigail, at the age of two, learned, she's now six, and participated in the Mighty Might program last year, and absolutely loved it. I'm in business. I helped my father run an ongoing family business in Exeter, which has been in our family since 1950. The one thing I know about business is you always want to do a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We all know what the Mullers' strengths are. They run this beautiful operation, but they have many threats these days. Jay has gone over this in past presentations, and past speakers spoke. Other mountains are expanding, and that threatens this wonderful mountain here. We have a wonderful opportunity to let Tim and Diane, who've been wonderful stewards of this mountain, expand into the West Bowl and capitalize on all their strengths and that opportunity. As a resident and as an abutter to the property, unanimously, I support them 100%. Thank you for your time.
Doug Graham is up, and Jim McMahon is on deck.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Doug Graham. I'm a resident of Sunapee. I'm speaking tonight in favor of the master development plan and environmental management plan in general, and the West Bowl expansion in particular. I've been a registered professional civil engineer in New Hampshire for 29 years, so I have a good deal of knowledge about construction and environmental practices. I'm also part of a skiing family. I've been a volunteer ski patroller for 40 years, and have been at Mount Sunapee for the past 21. My wife is also a longtime skier, and our son, who is now a race coach at the mountain, started in the Mighty Might ski program here when he was five years old. This summer, I began working part-time at the Adventure Park as an aerial guide and summer patroller. Most importantly, however, as I said before, I'm a resident of Sunapee, living on Route 103B, one of the main roads that feeds the resort. When I first started at Mount Sunapee in 93, the area was under state management. Then, as we all know, the Mullers were awarded the lease and operating agreement in 1996. Since then, the clientele has increased, as has the winter and summer recreation experience. From my perspective as a resident, these increases have improved the economic situation of the surrounding communities by providing indirect support of local businesses. Many of the restaurants and shops that my family and I frequent have either expanded or see additional... additional customers, especially during the winter. The main reason I want to speak tonight is in support of the 2015-2019 Master Development Plan and Environmental Management Plan. As a ski patroller, I have the opportunity to interact with guests on a daily basis, particularly on chairlift rides. The conversation frequently turns to the guest's experience or their thoughts about needed improvements. Many have heard about the proposed West Bowl expansion and wonder when it's going to be constructed. Unfortunately, there is a major misconception among residents, among residents and guests, that condominiums are being proposed on state land. It's abundantly clear, at least to me, especially in the most recent MDP, that this is not the case. While it's true that the resort privately owns land that bounds the state park...
Thank you, Doug. We appreciate it. We had our two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make up his time. I'm from Unity, New Hampshire. We're right next to Goshen. Our farm looks right at the mountain. We have been here for quite a few years, I'm an employee. I've been working here since the state, the state was running when I started here. They really, you can't say enough good things about it, but we wanted to get up and say, "I really hope you guys go for this plan. I really think the town needs it, Goshen needs it. I think it'd be the best thing for this area." Thank you.
Thank you. I neglected to let Bruce Healy know that he was on deck, so Bruce, you're up with Arthur Barret on deck.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Healy. I'm a resident of Newbury. I'm also Newbury's town perambulator. And I know, who cares and what's that? But believe it or not, we have a state statue that requires that every, every seven years, a town renew what's called its marks and bounds. And the bounds and the marks, the marks in specific are monuments, and these monuments were set out historically in the 1800s. The West Bowl development has the potential to affect and impact several of these monuments. I have the GPS coordinates for all the monuments, but you know, I believe these monuments are, have historical significance. The first perambulation reports that we have on record with Goshen and Fisherfield, which was what Newbury was known, is from 1793. And all I'm asking is, is that I hope that care will be taken, not to impact these monuments or their location. Thank you.
Thank you. Arthur Barret is up with Will Abbott on deck.
Hello. My name is Arthur Barret. I live in Newbury, New Hampshire. And even though I'm one person, I come to this proposal with four different viewpoints. First off, I am an employee of the mountain. I've been so for five years now, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. With that, I get a benefit. What's that? The free ski pass. Thank you very much. Which brings me to my second perspective. As a skier, I appreciate everything that the mountain provides, but it's been sort of the same way for a little while, and other mountains are moving ahead, and I would hate to have this place be left behind. So with the West Bowl expansion, it'll bring more interest to the mountain. It will provoke people to give it a try. Part of that also, leading from there to my other, another perspective, is that I'm a school bus driver for the Kearsarge Regional School District, and my company provides transportation for a number of schools that come here and enjoy winter programs. They come, the little kids come, and they ski, and they are a riot. And it's amazing how nice that it steps from one thing to another to another, and they endear themselves to the mountain. Lastly, I am the manager of Davis Cabs. We are just down the road, we are right on the lake, and it's a summer place. Our guests appreciate the activity part, and all the new things that they can do here in the summertime. So with that, I appreciate this expansion. I think it'll help me in at least four different ways. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Will Abbott is up with Steve McGarrett on deck.
Good morning, good evening, actually. My name is Will Abbott. I'm here tonight representing the Society for the Protection of New Hampshire Forest, where I serve as Vice President for Policy and Reservation Stewardship. The Forest Society is also ably represented on the Mount Sunapee Advisory Committee by Nancy Marashio, who's already been introduced at Newbury. And I'd like to address one set of issues that really go to the plans for the West Bowl. And many in this room understand the long history the Forest Society has had with the conservation of Mount Sunapee, the establishment of the park, and the development of the state park system. From 1911 to 1934, as Jay pointed out, the Forest Society acquired 1,185 acres of land on the mountain, including the summit, for its permanent protection. Our goal at the time was to create a public mountain park for the people of New Hampshire to enjoy as a recreational resource. We believe that the current lessy has done a good job managing the skiing enterprise at Mount Sunapee for the people of New Hampshire and for the state park system. We also believe that the state entered this lease with the understanding that the state was leasing a ski area within the existing boundary of the state park, nothing more, nothing less. We believe that who owns the dirt matters. For example, the state cannot expand a lease onto land it does not own. As another example, if the Mullers, who own that 656 acres of land in Goshen, wish to develop the lands totally separate from the state park in Goshen, as long as the development complies with Goshen's zoning ordinances, then as owners of the dirt, they are entitled to advance the development proposal as they wish. If they wanted to, if they wanted to sell or donate the 656 acres of land to the state of New Hampshire for the state to add on to the state park, and the state concluded, after completing a thorough natural resource review and feasibility assessment, that such an addition was in the state's interest, as the owner, the state could then, and only then, consider an expansion of the lease onto the newly acquired state-owned land. One very large caveat to this is that there are many questions that require answers before such an acquisition could or should be considered.
Thank you very much for your, for your comments. And again, I don't mean to cut anybody short. We certainly are willing to take comments beyond the two minutes, but we have a lot of two minutes for each of the speakers. So thank you for your comments. Steve McGarrett is up with Valerie Sarkisian on deck.
Must be my handwriting. It's Steve McGrath from Sunapee, New Hampshire.
Yeah, well, that's your fault, not mine.
You're exactly right. And I'm speaking as both an employee at Mount Sunapee and for my own self. I started skiing here back in the 50s, and I started working here as a professional ski teacher in 1967. Suffice it to say, I was a young person, and it wasn't at that time a very wonderful experience. I came back here when the Mullers leased it, having worked for them at Ochemo, and I'm a supervisor in the four-to-seven-year-old program. I want to talk about the West Bowl expansion in the context of providing jobs for young people in the area. The Mullers and Mount Sunapee are one of the primary places where our young people, our high school students, and I work in six public high schools around here, can get valuable job experience. They can also get and make pretty good money. They also does not conflict with them academically. Most of them work weekends. So having the mountain here and having the West Bowl expansion will provide a huge opportunity for our young people to continue their growth and development, and continue to be productive young people in our workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Sarkisian is up with Douglas O'Clair on deck. I'm sorry, I couldn't quite catch that. Okay. Thank you, Doug. Was that, oh, okay, so, sorry. So Doug O'Clair is on deck, or is now up with Jeffrey Scott on deck.
My name is Mahan Sarkisian. I'm from New London, New Hampshire. I've been skiing this mountain for about 55 years. And I have to say one thing. At the beginning, the state was always conducting surveys and what they can do to improve things, and this went on for years and years and years. It got to the point where we used to joke about it when they came by with the clipboards. Things changed when the Mullers took over. They changed so well and so much, that it was a pleasure. If the state does not approve this, shame on the state. But hopefully, with what I'm hearing this evening, I know the Mullers have been doing a fantastic job. I just hope you people from the state realize that they've done as well, and give them their approval. I just have one comment, which has nothing to do with the plans. I wish the flagpole were larger and had a bigger flag on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Scott is up with Maura Gorham on deck.
Hi. My name is Jeffrey Scott. I'm from Chesterfield, New Hampshire. So I came up a little ways, didn't know anything about this project, but I was curious, even though it's not in my backyard. But everything that I've heard tonight, the presentation that's been made, I think it's good for this area. So simply put, thank you.
Thank you. Maura Gorham is up with Luke Gorham on deck.
Hi. My name is Maura Gorman, and I live in New London. I have both an insider and an outsider view of the operation of the mountain, in that I worked here for 17 years. Three years for the state of New Hampshire, and then 14 years under the operation being leased by the Mullers. This inside, and now, the most important part is that I retired three years ago, and my outside view is that I ski here most every day of the week, and thoroughly enjoy it. I think that they have proven their expertise and their commitment to the community, and that this project should be approved. There's no question about it. One other thing that I'd like to say is that I'm always impressed with the fact that the Mullers and the senior management team here live locally. They are Newbury, Sunapee, and other surrounding community residents, and that makes a huge difference for all of us. So please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Luke Gorham is up with Kathy Haber on deck.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Luke Gorman. I'm a resident of the town of Sunapee. And in full disclosure, I was my mother. To say that a ski area acted as daycare for me would be an understatement. I don't even remember learning how to ski at the age of two and a half. Sunapee is very important to me, but I also feel that it's very important to the young population in this area. I heard on the radio this morning that there's a local nonprofit called Stay Work Play that is trying to get people in their late twenties and early thirties to stay in New Hampshire, or move here and get gainful employment. Things like the West Bowl expansion will only increase opportunities for people like myself to be able to live and work in this area, and also to just enjoy it at its fullest. That being said, I support the entire master development plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Kathy Haber is up with Gunther Haber on deck.
We've only been here 40 years. It's...
I'm sorry, didn't quite catch it.
We've only been in business for the state of New Hampshire 42 years, and it's Hubert might not have heard of us.
Fair enough.
Yeah. I guess we don't pay enough taxes. I want to rename the 20, this master plan, the 26-year incremental real estate condominium development plan for the Mullers and their corporate friends, CNL. And I say friends, because they sold the lease for $10. I wish I was their friend. Hence, as the council considers this proposal, what financial markers will you use? The state has the burden to make sure they are not engaging in corporate welfare or subsidies. Why do I say this? In formal calculations, from 89 to 99, they had $11 million in gross revenue. They paid 5.6 of this, 5.6% of this, about $4.9 million to the state for rent. I rented my Lebanon store. Out of my gross revenues in 2009, I paid 12.9% to a private pre-tan real estate firm for my lease. Apples, oranges, maybe I'm a bad business person. But as you think about this expansion, what economic markers will you use to make sure one private company is not subsidized by the public? This is a state park. When the condos become skied and ski out, who will receive the additional income? Who will profit? Not Sullivan County, we know that. Or maybe it's not a subsidy. Maybe it's a business bailout. They'll be later on mentioned at a public forum. The Mullers were very upset, hence they litigated five times to move the line, because they made it bad real estate development. I'm not into bailing out any more businesses. Why? Remember, if this expansion is not linked to condos, that backside development will not happen. Each time history repeats itself, the cost. What are the costs of people of the state? Thank you.
Thank you. Gunther Herbert is up, and Bruce Hudson is on deck.
My name is Gunther Hubert, and my wife has spoke before me. And I will not argue that the Mullers and Mr. Gamble have done a great job with the mountain. I just wish that the state had hired Mr. Gamble 16 years ago to run this mountain, and give him free rein. I think he'd be looking at the same place. People look at economic opportunity, and over the last 16 years, I know, and Mr. McConnell, Frank, Ron Skinner's, he's my neighbor, he's about the only business that I've really seen continue on over these years. There are businesses for lease up and down the region. You know, Newport really hasn't seen any growth. You know, we used to see a lot of people, when it was a state park, would come before and after, weekends in our stores and shop, you know, but the Mullers do run a resort, and the design is to be more enclosed, which means to capture as many dollars as you can, and not let them out into the community as far as the retail sector goes. You know, that's what I've seen, that's what I've experienced, and my son, who has worked for the mountain this past winter, and has definitely enjoyed it, but was also told firsthand, when people come to park their cars, refer them only to shop in the stores run here on the mountain, not go outside. And I think he was very disappointed that the mountain felt that way. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Bruce Hudson is up with Renette Rendell on deck. Oh, I'm sorry, there was a line across through that, with June Fletcher on deck. Victor, June Victor.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Hudson. I'm a resident of New London, and I have to disclose that for the last 16 years, I've been having a winter gig over here as a part-time ski instructor. And out of those 16 years, it's been a great place to hang out during the winter. And I think I've heard that from a lot of people here tonight, that it's a great place. I will also state that I'm very much in favor of the Mount Sunapee Master Development Plan. The Mullers and CNL Leisure Systems has done a great job acting as private business owners within the lease agreement, and also as stewards of Mount Sunapee. During this time, they invested millions and millions of dollars into the infrastructure on the mountain, along with instituting a very positive work culture atmosphere. I kind of define work culture as, again, it's a great place to hang out, and it's certainly not a job, at least in the ski instructor. This equates to a positive feedback that we receive on a regular basis from our guests, also known as the Sunapee difference. By looking at the number of skier visits each year, it is obvious that they must be doing something right. The first year, the total number of skier visits was 165,000 skier visits. After 16 years, the average of skier visits exceeds 240,000 skier visits per year. This is a tremendous amount of revenue generated for the state, the towns of Goshen, Newbury, and along with the private businesses in the surrounding area. This is a win-win situation for the state and New Hampshire, including the gem of the state, Cannon Mountain. As with all controversial issues, you have the advocates for and against. As with all controversial issues, you have the advocates for and against. Taking that into consideration, I would hope that Dred could come on, could come to an amicable decision and not have this issue become someone's political agenda. I firmly believe that over the past 16 years, the Mullers have proven themselves to be fiscally responsible, environmentally protective, green advocates, proud stewards of the state park, and committed to making Mount Sunapee resort even better than it is today. Thank you.
June Flicker is up with PK Flicker on deck.
Okay, well, PK, you're up.
Okay, thank you, PK. Virginia Schnidler is now up, with Susan Kriktman on deck, please.
I'd like to give my minutes to Forest Society.
I'm sorry. Sure, if that's the gentleman with the Forest Society, Will Abbott, if you wanted to continue within that two minutes.
The two things I wanted to say that I ran out of time about was, if the Mullers on their land in Goshen wanted to retain ownership of the dirt, and build a development with slope-side residential development, and then plug this development into the existing ski lease with the state, in our view, this would be problematic. The state cannot use public land to create exclusive rights or benefits to a privileged few that other citizens of the state do not have access to. Public lands are for the public benefit, not for the benefit of private residential real estate development. Now, I take Jay at his word that they don't have plans for real estate development now, but I think the state of New Hampshire, before it allows any approval of this master development plan, needs to answer that question, and it needs to answer it clearly. What's clear today is who owns the dirt. What is also clear to us is that the dirt owned by the public carries special obligations and responsibilities that state government must exercise on behalf of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Kriktman is up with Resha McMahon on deck. Oh, okay, well, there you have it. Thank you, Susan. Resha McMahon is up with Chris Robb on deck.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Resha McMahon, I'm from Sutton. At the time of my legislative experience, in 2005 through 2010, I represented Newbury and Sutton. And I would say, Mr. Gamble, no one questions your ability in terms of management and your intention, but one of the things, as a public official, I was very concerned about was land that was donated to the state for recreational purposes for all citizens. And one thing that I heard from my constituents was that they no longer could afford the ski passes, that became more expensive than when the state ran it. The other issue that I think is very important is transparency. I heard today that there are no plans for building on the other land, but Jay, as you know, you told me that was the intention when I served in the legislature, that you purchased the property for the potential for expansion. While the Mullers were snow farmers, you were a business, and that would be the way to make the money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chris Robb is up with Jalen Johnson on deck.
My name's Chris Robb, I've been a Sunapee resident for all but the first three years of my life, and a mountain employee for the past three years. So I have two perspectives to share. First, as a Sunapee resident, it seems to me that it's a summer town, and there's a lot going on in the summer, and that doesn't carry over to the winter. Everyone I talk to only comes here for Mount Sunapee, and some limited other winter recreational activities, but I think that Mount Sunapee is a huge draw to winter recreation in this area, and a huge benefit to area business. And my second perspective, as a mountain employee for the past three years, is that I felt like, day one, coming to this company, they welcomed me with open arms into their Mount Sunapee family, and I felt very appreciated, very accommodated, and it's one of the best employers I've worked for. They're actually helping me work 40 hours a week, pay for school, pay for housing, and work towards completing an engineering degree at this point. So, I wanted to at least voice my opinion that this is a fantastic company to work for, and a huge economic benefit to this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Jalen Johnson is up with Jay Flanders on deck.
That was more or less right. Jalen Johnson. That's fine. It's not the first time. First of all, I don't think any of us deny the fact that the Mullers and Jay have done a tremendous job of operating the park and the skiing facility. There's not a question there. I do think, kind of building on, and again, two minutes' time isn't much, and it's getting late, I don't want to belabor it, but I think what Will Abbott and Resha had just said is a huge part of it, or at least alluded to, we don't even know what the West Bowl development is. Yes, everybody that loves to ski, yes, that's the proposal, is ski areas, but well, what else is going to be there? And there needs to be a commitment as to how much, whether residential is going to be, to what extent, how that's going to affect things. And just, again, we need a whole lot more information before, oh yes, West Bowl, or oh no, what is West Bowl? A few lines and a piece of paper, and a yellow, maybe there'll be houses here, maybe they won't, I think everybody recognized, you can't, ski tickets are not going to build a facility. The other part of that, too, is, and again, building a bit on what Will had said, the Forest Society certainly was a major part of the creation, the ability for the state park to be here. Much of that property was either taken by eminent domain or bought under, for virtually nothing, dollar an acre is what my grandfather got, which was not particularly important financially to them, because it was going to public good. And I do think, public good and being an amenity for a private residential development are two different things. Thank you very much.
Jay Flanders is up with Hal Kruger on deck.
Good evening. Mount Sunapee is unique. It's kind of close to Boston, and it's got major contiguous wilderness off to the west. There isn't a major condominium mess that you drive past when you get here, or even close by, and I think that that may be the draw, and I'm not sure why they want to mess with that. Will the master development plan disavow any real estate development associated with the West Bowl expansion? I don't know, I think that's why they're doing it. Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to catch that, that was Jay?
Jay, yes.
Okay, great, thanks, sorry, I did. Thank you.
Good evening, Hal Kruger, resident of Newbury. I think it's time that we move the ideas from paper and get them up toward the mountain. We're ready for it, and we need it. I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the old chestnuts that I've heard many years back, and every time we get together and go through this, some of the things that come up, and then try to focus on those facts on which you folks have to focus to make your decisions. Running the ski area is a high-risk business. Many go under because they fail to keep up with the technology, or to improve infrastructure, or they're unable to supply what is demanded. And that last point is the important one. Is Mount Sunapee keeping up with the demand? Ski on a weekend, or a holiday, and the signs of reaching capacity are evident. Long lines, crowded trails, too many skiers concentrated on some of those trails. Even the proposed very minimal expansion is necessary for the mountain to improve the experience, and therefore keep up with the demands of the customers. Some might say, so what, this was an old chestnut. The issue is not so much the need for more ski terrain, it is that the use of public lands for private profiting is just plain wrong, to which I would answer, why? Public-private partnerships have a long and successful history. It is a way to cost-effectively provide the public with quality services and facilities. The history of Mount Sunapee Resort's growth and reputation testifies to that fact, as does the history of our national parks. Pertinent facts are these, and these are what you need to keep in mind.
Thank you, Hal. Steve Russell is up, and Maven Trason is on deck. Steve Russell. Oh, okay, coming down. Gerald Coogan is in the hole.
Good evening, my name is Steve Russell, I live in Newbury, and I just basically have one question, and that question is, was the Mount Sunapee Resort sold in 2008 to CNL Lifestyle And if so, is there, are the Mullers the direct leaseholders, or is CNL Lifestyle Properties the leaseholder, and the Mullers are leaseholders to CNL Properties? I just would like an answer to that question.
Jay, I know you tried to answer that during the question session, do you want to take a?
The state is the owner of the resort. CNL, our relationship with CNL is really, they are the primary leaseholder. It's, we sold them our interests, and we leased it back from them. So we're a sub-SE. It's another, it's a financing arrangement, they are the primary leaseholder, we lease from them, and so we are the operators of the mountain.
Okay, with that in mind, I'd just like to offer a few facts about CNL, and this actually comes from their website. CNL Financial Group, formerly CNL Commercial Net Lease, is a private, is a leading private investment management firm, providing global real estate and alternative investment opportunities. We are committed to delivering a broad array of quality product choices, and offer an exceptional platform of alternative investment solutions. CNL Properties owns the nation's largest portfolio of ski resorts. CNL's Real Estate Investment Trust own many major resorts and hotels such as Mount Washington Hotels. Most of the properties are leased back to operators under triple net leases, with the operators responsible for day-to-day operations of the properties. CNL invests in and manages commercial real estates, and invests in private companies. The company's divisions include CNL Commercial Real Estate, CNL Securities Corporation, CNL Lifestyle Properties, CNL Growth Properties, et cetera, et cetera. CNL and/or its affiliates have formed or acquired companies with more than $29 billion in assets. These are all non-traded equity investments. Mount Sunapee is an investment opportunity, a small part of a larger portfolio, that are bought and sold depending on risk factors. So the last thing I'd like to say, if I have any time.
Steve, that does conclude your two-plus minutes, so, but we, please feel free to submit comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. This one was a tough one to scratch out here, but we'll go with Neville Trason is up with We'll go with Gerald. How about Ralph?
Maybe that's Ralph March, Newbury, New Hampshire. I just wanted to support this plan because I've been bringing veterans here as a ski program since it was state-run. All I've ever seen of Mr. Gamble and the mountain is to support veterans at discounted tickets, and make them feel welcome, and help them heal. That's all I have to say.
I will now go back to see if Michael Vixen was interested in speaking. Michael?
Thank you all for giving me a chance to speak again. I am one of the people that Jay referred to. I am ski patrol director here now, winter and summer, thanks to Jay, Tim, and Diane. I chose to accept a job that was offered to me. The reason is I trust them. A lot of disparaging remarks have been made about future plans that are not in the master development plan, and I think as elected officials that are sitting here and/or an interested party, you need to look at what is, what the plan is. Part of the reason I decided to accept that job and stay year-round is because I do trust them. I've watched them since the beginning of the lease, I've been a patrolman here part-time in the wintertime since 1987. Yes, I was one of the one other people Jay referred to, as many in the room have referred to, that I learned in the 60s how to ski here, and have hiked the mountain since those early days by myself or in company, or show as many people as I can. It's a beautiful park, I have a vested interest in keeping it that way, and the reason, again, that I'm staying here is because I trust it. The advanced medical skills I have, I have marketable skills that I could go elsewhere, other states, and again, this is the reason I've stayed here. So, thank you all, and look forward to a future enthusiastic West Bowl expansion.
Were there any other individuals who signed up that chose not to speak at that time that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I would like to offer just a few brief closing comments, and again, thank everybody for their attendance and their participation this evening. This is, again, a very important opportunity to receive input from the public. We will continue to receive and welcome additional written comment through September 26th. I would encourage you, if you would like, you can reach us through our website at newhampshirestateparks.org, or we have a special email account that's been established, mountsunapeecomments@dred.nh.gov. We are collecting comments from those who wrote them out at the front desk when you walk out, and so I, again, do appreciate that. I would just like to reiterate that the next steps, well, I will work with my team at the Department of Resources and Economic Development to review the comments that we receive for the MDP, and then consider, you know, the public comments and input from the Mount Sunapee Advisory Committee. I do intend to provide my draft response to the MDP and the EMP to the public for review. All, or a portion of the MDP will be approved in a time that the resort can prepare for the next annual operating plan, which is due and must be accepted by June 30th of next year. So, with that, I, again, would like to thank everybody for So with that, I, again, would like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and providing their thoughts and their inputs, and I wish everybody a warm and prosperous rest of their summer, and thank you for being here very much this evening. Thank you.[1790.61]